Good evening. My name is Jack Dearborn. I'm the Chair of the, we're the zoning Board of Adjustment. This evening, we have one case, this case 0217 Pitbull Realty Group, Inc. And the variance, as far as variance, it's 28 point, excuse me, 28.9, 28.9, to build a driveway in a wetland buffer on 351 South Sack Highway. It's map, tax map, 109 lot 21. Okay, before we start, what I'll do is ask the members to, would you use that cell?
Mark Moretti, member.
Stuart Wertzman, member.
Michael Meyer, alternate.
Melton Wright, member.
Thank you. These are the members that will be seated for the first case, and at this point, I entertain a motion to accept the application 0217.
Move to accept case number 0217.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. And for discussion, let me just read the variance. There is five points, a hardship completed. There is a list of butters. There. There was not a deed, but deeds have been provided for us. So at this point, any other discussion on accepting this? With that being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Of opposed, and abstention, 5-0-0. Thank you. Okay. Do we have the applicant or whoever to speak to us this evening?
Yes, would you like some plans that you can read?
Just take your name, please.
Roscoe Blaisdell on the land surveyor, wetland scientist.
Maybe we can just have a couple up here. Anybody, you folks associated with this job?
I'm the owner of the property.
Okay.
Chuck Sargent.
If you want to come up here and watch me do this, you're welcome to, to see where we're pointing and stuff like that. But if you don't, that's fine. I just want to make sure everybody's welcome.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm listening. It's pretty straightforward at the moment.
Okay. Before I have your seat, I do have an issue with this, the map. I know you brought the new one up here. Is it the same as the one I have here?
Yes.
Except color?
Yep.
One of the problems when I was reading this over, and I just want to make sure we got this right before we start. You have a three-unit subdivision, correct?
Yes.
And you're here because you think you're 25 feet from the cemetery, where your plan is drawn. You need to be 25 feet away from the cemetery.
That's state law.
And you encroach, oh, sorry, yeah.
Yep, yep.
And you encroach into the wetlands, is that correct?
Yeah, we have to encroach in one or the other. We can't, I don't think the state's gonna say we can, yeah.
Well, we don't speak for the state.
Yep.
But that's, that's certainly your prerogative to go that way. But the point I'm making is you're here tonight to ask for a variance to encroach into the wetland buffer.
Buffer, yep.
Okay. With that said, before we even get going, I looked at the deeds, and everybody from 1949 forwards has been reserving and accepting the cemetery.
Yes.
So, does your client believe he owns that land for the cemetery?
No, because they accept it. So the person that sold it sells everything except the cemetery.
And everybody down the line use the same land.
Yep. And they reserved a right to it.
Right, but there's only one owner. Because the next guy can't accept the reserve, except for the, maybe the easement.
Yeah, because he never received it.
But the land is still in the name of the person back in 1949 that started all this.
Yep.
With that said, you're hanging this case on the fact that there is a cemetery there. You're not disputing that.
Correct.
I think what everybody is wondering is, how big is it? And do you represent what in fact is that? Because somebody actually owns that land for the cemetery, not you as a client, is that correct?
We don't own it. The town on their tax map shows them owning it. I don't know if the town owns it, but we don't own it.
Okay. So here you are drawing a map, and you really don't know where the cemetery is. So you could, it's like having a donut.
Well, I can explain my reasoning.
You know the outside of the donut.
Yep.
But you don't know how big the hole is, which is the cemetery in the middle. So, how do you know that this map is compliant to your request, when you don't know where the cemetery is?
The deed, our deed says the cemetery, our deed kind of goes around and around and around. And it says the cemetery starts at this corner.
I underlined this earlier.
I found a wall.
Yeah.
I found a headstone. This, all the land has been logged at a certain point, and when they logged this, they just, it was like a no man's land, this whole area. So someone, a long time ago, thought this, now I'm calling it 50 feet wide.
Only because the stone was probably 49.
It's pretty clear when you own the property that it's accurate where you, where you.
So I'm doing my best. I own a crystal ball.
I don't disagree what you did. But here we go again, where you're not, as a professional surveyor, and you're not willing to put four pins in there to say that's where it is.
I am. I'm gonna pin around it, and I'm gonna say, we're not claiming this. And if there's nothing on the record in the deeds, or some old timer that knows something that we don't know.
Well, I guess my point is, you could be encroaching on a person's land.
I, you're saying the cemetery could be bigger.
Or could be, or you could have more land. You may not mind that. But I'm saying it could be bigger. And I guess the question is, when you, when you pick the line, when the, when the stone's been disturbed, when it's that close to the stone, it, it looks like you're just trying to get away with the, the minimum encroachment.
No, no, there's, um, have you been up there?
No, but I read your map.
Okay. So, a map and standing there, just.
It's pretty clear when you actually go on site.
Just area, so all the trees are left here, there's rubble in here. And all of a sudden, the, the land use type changes at that point. I might be a foot more, foot less, but it's, nobody can tell me exactly. So surveyors have to, I don't want to use the word play God sometimes, but we have to have something.
Could you describe the conditions that are leading you to believe there's a demarcation there at some point?
Yeah, there's a stone wall here.
No.
Starts and ends. This is the land use, this is all lawn and lawn, lawn all around it. Here, it's kind of grown up the poker brush in the last 15 years. This is all mature trees, and there's not a stone wall on the side, but it's, things were pushed around to be right on that. So, I, I believe.
The stone fell over, correct? It's not standing upright?
Correct.
So if the stone is off by three feet, and the actual place where it is, is just on the, beneath that access road, I mean, in that buffer area. See, you don't know where the buffer area is stationed. You're just making approximation.
Yep, that's what we have to do sometimes.
I understand that. I'm not arguing with you.
If you own this, and neither party could be sure, we'd make a boundary line agreement. And that's what you do sometimes when you have no idea.
Let's see, here's, here's kind of the problem. Chapter 29 of the State IRS case. It's very clear, you must stay 20 feet away from the cemetery.
Yep.
But you don't, you don't really know where the body's buried. You just know there's a disturbed, or your own land was disturbed headstone.
Which might have been.
And you're extremely close to the disturbed headstone where you draw the line. You're not 25 feet away from the, the headstone that you found.
I'm, I'm probably 27 feet from the headstone or more.
So how can you tell me that's not a grave?
You ever saw in the movie Poltergeist? Back in the 40s, some creep nuked the cemetery. Many landowners ago.
Well, also, somebody could have dragged out a load of logs of hardwood back 100 years ago and knocked the thing over, and nobody cared because it wasn't his family. But here's, here's the problem. We're supposed to be 25 feet away from a cemetery. And you have done nothing to identify if that is factually, in fact, a cemetery. You've just done by observation on the top.
That's what land surveyors do.
Okay.
We follow deeds?
I'm not arguing with that. I'm just saying that you haven't made any attempt to do anything else.
What other attempt do I do? I've read the deeds, I look for evidence. So I'm a licensed land surveyor. That's what we do.
You exhausted your capabilities on this. I'm suggesting there may be other capabilities to identify where the disturbed soil is.
If you want, it's a lot more clearer. I don't think he's being very gray about the boundary lines. I think, I, I know what you're saying, where it could be, you know, a, a small range of, of imperfection, but I mean, I, I mean, you, would you rather us approach further onto the wetlands and stay 28, 30 feet from where he thinks it is? Or, I mean, that's what, you know what I mean?
I'm guessing we're trying to be a stack base.
Yeah.
The problem is.
Well, it's hard ones.
You, you don't really know where that cemetery is. You, you based on observation. I understand the level of your abilities, you did exactly what a survey would do. So, that's an issue. And I guess you didn't notice the owner. There's no owner here tonight who has been noticed.
The town claims to be the owner by tax map.
I don't know, I don't like to be true.
They're having us verify that anyway, and.
I don't know that to be true.
You don't know that the town owns it, or you don't know if they're claiming it by tax map?
Both. Either. I don't, I don't know, because.
The records are being questioned, because there, there is no record of who owns that piece of land. Yeah, I mean, sometimes the cemetery says, well, the town owns it. The cemetery must own it. Not necessarily.
Is up to you guys to inform this board and bring the facts here. Okay? So what we're trying to do is identify what's missing, whether you're capable of providing or not. I'm not arguing that. I'm just gonna say, there's an issue of that property has not been identified. If you go back and read the deeds, which I don't pretend to be a lawyer, or even play one on TV, but it kind of gives you, kind of gives you the impression back in 1949, somebody wanted to reserve and accept, accept and reserve this, which meant it stayed with that person conveying. And everybody from that point on kept doing the same thing, although nobody else could do that because they didn't own it.
They, they had to keep doing it, yeah?
Well, they didn't, but it means nothing as far as who owns it. The guy that first did it owns it because the guy never passed it down. So I'm just saying, there is an ownership here of that property in question. You're saying it's the town. I don't see the town here tonight to agree to that.
We, we have to address that planning board anyway, and we saw that.
Yeah, but we're gonna give you a variance. That may be true, but we're gonna give you a variance.
Based just off.
25 feet away from the cemetery, and.
You're giving us a variance to the wetland, and that's.
I'm giving you a variance driven by this legislation. So, I just want to make sure, because this is what I was thinking when I was reading this at home. So basically, you haven't identified the owner, right? And on top of that, you've made an approximation of where you think the cemetery is, based on some evidence.
Exactly where it is unless someone can prove differently, and that's what surveyors have to do sometimes. That is exa, I'm a land surveyor, I have a license, I've researched all the records.
I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying.
I don't, I, the town probably doesn't own it.
So what about your client?
How, he, he doesn't own it, and we're not claiming it.
That's, that's a question for, that's not really dependent on, on the variance, on who owns it. I think it's, that's, that's, that can be clarified. I think really the matter is the distance to the wetlands. I mean.
From where? Your, your dotted line that you won't take ownership of?
Correct.
Well, that's, and that's one of the things we have to address for the planning board, is who the ownership, and we may be making it, or, for the town may be the owner, and that's who it may be needed to. But I don't see how that matters as to the, to the distance, the distances.
Occupation is a big thing on land, and the occupation line is what I'm showing.
Possession by quiet title may exist, but I'm just suggesting, you haven't gone to a court and showed 20 years of unattended access.
Right. That was one of the issues, those are the two issues that we were resolving with them.
I'm just saying, this is two issues in front of us tonight.
Right. I think only one of them pertains to you, though.
Well, so you, that's your opinion. I'm just suggesting that. If you don't know how big it is, you can't draw the line.
I know how big it is. It stops right here.
But based on the evidence you see.
And that's what we have to do.
Three feet over the line, into the buffer, could be the, where the actual body's buried.
I don't know if there's any bodies out there right now.
Mr. Chairman, question please?
Yes.
To you. I get both sides of this, and I would wonder if, if we are going to, or not, grant a variance, the concerns about the cemetery can be put into the limitations of variance. Is that not correct? In other words, they come here with, with a, a question about the wetlands, and if, if we were to theoretically grant them the wetlands variance, it can be contingent upon further definition of the cemetery. And if, if the cemetery is a problem, then the variance would be null and void.
You touched on some options. We could do something here. We can allow you to go through, make a presentation. And then we can vote based on our understanding of, and the clarity of your plan. Or, you might gather from this conversation, at least from me anyways, that there may be some concerns that you may want to go on, consider, and come back and ask for a continuance. Okay? The problem with the variance is, if you don't get it the first time, unless you have a materially different application, we're not gonna hear it the second time. So, the reason variance is granted is because it's sort of a relief valve of the zoning, because nobody can make the perfect zoning, but it does allow the RSA's for a zoning board. That grants changes, to effectively for your specific reason, for your, for your lot anyways. So, we understand you bought this, we understand you made a three, three division subdivision, we understand you're intent. But I think there's still an issue here hanging out of that, and.
I think if you, if you actually went and saw the piece of land, that you wouldn't feel such a, like, that there's this massive range of where the cemetery is. I mean, with, I think we've clearly.
I think you're missing the point.
Yeah.
The ownership and the cemetery, this thing, 100 years since that place has been used.
Well, the ownership isn't really, isn't really a major factor. It's not really, it's not really, it has nothing to do with the distances.
And the other thing you should ask, I should ask is reasonably, is have you an alternative without having to go through this?
Yeah, we could do a dredge and fill right here. And get an extra permit, driveway permit, which the state probably wouldn't give us.
I mean, it's five acres that's, if it's, I mean, we have no access to.
We're entitled to get to, you know, somehow get there.
I don't disagree, and you have other options. So, I just want to ask you, do you want to continue with your case tonight?
Yeah, I think it's strong.
And accept the outcome? Okay, or do you want to go and take a continuance and come back with more information?
I've exhausted my research. If someone in the town comes up with something different that didn't get recorded, I can only go by what's recorded, plus the evidence I've, I've found. By what's recorded, I know there's a cemetery, I know it starts here. I've got a wall that just abruptly stopped. I have a change in use. Back then, a lot of people used rods and links. Well, 49 and a half feet would be three rods. So that kind of played into it a little bit. But all the rubble stopped right on that line. So I, I did my best as a land surveyor, and when people get sloppy when they create things, I can't improve it. It's, I'm stuck with what I find.
As well as the ownership issue is going to be resolved, and the planning board will not let us continue until that's resolved anyway. And that's really an issue, I think, for them. I think the biggest thing that what you guys would be looking at is purely just the distances and granting the variance for the wetlands. Cemetery is really, that's something that we would be going to the state if we're actually going to encroach into the area. If it's a concern of a few feet, I mean, we could all, which, we're pretty clearly defined, we could always slide it even further closer to the wetlands. I mean, but we're, we're very confident as to where everything sits. There's not really a crazy range in definition here. There's, there's good landmarkings, so.
I've, I've been working on this for a long time. I've had a lot of thinking and different strategies. What did they mean, and the tax map showed it over here, but the deed certainly didn't put it here. They just, okay, cemetery here. You don't trust tax maps, as you probably know.
Absolutely not. Even the town doesn't trust them. They'd say, if you don't think that line is where it's supposed to be, go get a survey. I mean, somebody did best, best effort 23 years ago, 40 years ago to do a tax map.
Oh, definitely. They weren't paid to go crazy on it. But I've, I've done everything I can in research. I've done everything I can by walking around it, looking at evidence. I've been surveying for about 35 years, and sometimes it's, you gotta work with mud, try to put it together. Sometimes you can make an agreement with somebody. If the town doesn't want to claim it, I'm gonna put in my plan, owners unknown, or heirs of, such and such, then maybe.
It'll be resolved. Yeah, that has to be resolved.
Mr. Chairman, if the, if the variance is approved tonight, as drawn, and the ownership question comes up, and something changes, which forces the driveway to move farther into the wetland, so the variance would no longer be valid, then this would be moot, wouldn't it? It would have to be done. Shouldn't the question of ownership be?
They, they're, that's an issue with that. They have brought that up as well. And then, before we even go into their next meeting, we have to have that situated, and they won't approve it unless that is, is clarified. So that's one of their things. The, the distance to the wetlands and the ownership are their two things. So if we got the variance for the distance, we still have to go through them for the ownership situation. And so somebody has to own it. I don't know who, I mean, so we'll have that clarified, and.
I'm just wondering if it would be more prudent to determine the ownership so the lines can be firmly defined, more firmly defined.
The lines are not gonna change. The towns may say, we don't want to claim it, even though they have put, made the public think they own it for a long time.
I think it makes, I think it makes sense for the town to own it.
No matter who gets it, okay.
We're not adding any value to this conversation, the lines. Okay. So, this is what I think as a chairman, we'll see what the board thinks. I think there's an issue here with the land and where the cemetery is. I propose that I would take the action to speak with town council, and specifically ask him if we're on solid ground, will we forward legally? Or are we exposing ourselves by going forwards and coming back on the town? That's my concern. My concern is, this is not a clean-cut issue. I understand the surveyor did exactly what I would expect of a surveyor. I'm not arguing that. A landowner would like to move forwards and advocate for his application, of course he would. But the question is, has there been a sufficient due diligence on what you would expect to find through the density of the soil? Once you disturb soil, it doesn't go back to the same compaction. Civil engineers struggle to get that.
This entire site has been, you know, sheep pasture, whatever. So the entire property has been.
What's being disturbed? Were you?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion for continuance. You folks just sit down until we figure out which way we're going. Okay.
Make the motion to continue, case number 0217.
Thank you. Till the next meeting. Next meeting, you have a calendar, March? 7. 7, believe me.
Continue until.
Uh, second Tuesday?
Oh, second Tuesday. Oh, the first Tuesday?
The first Tuesday?
I like the first Tuesday.
All right, first Tuesday's the 7th.
Is this a non-leap year? So it'll be the same date as today?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? My intention is to go and basically ask the attorney if we're on solid ground, will we forward, so we have a kind of facial observation by the, by the surveyor showing where the outline is different from the other part. And also the question of the ownership. Because we're supposed to notify all the parties, knowing that they have a meeting here. So, I'm gonna ask those some questions. Okay, based on that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being none, abstention, pay no. We'll continue this next month, here?
Well, I'm doing nothing between then, so see what you can find, because I've done everything I can.
Now, I do believe, speaking for another board, as I change my hat, that you guys were coming back on the 9th to the planning board, assuming that this variance would have been granted.
Right, so we won't.
You're also scheduled for the 23rd, so I, I continue you the other day.
When's this one?
March 7th. So, what will happen is they'll open the, they'll open the meeting, open this, your case at the planning board on Thursday night, and they'll continue it till the 23rd. So you don't need to come. That's where I'm going with this.
Check this for the record, that's what you're doing.
Yep.
Okay, we got some minutes to do? We didn't dare do this without you.
I got a quick question. So what, what is it that you, that you need to see behind it? I couldn't understand really what you're talking about with the attorney thing, and.
The meeting is over. I hate to say that, but we've made the decision to continue.
Well, I understand. I totally get that. I'm asking you, what, what will be, what, what is it that you're looking for to further define, further define the situation here?
What's the, what was the date of the meeting? I didn't remember.
7.
7.
Okay.
10 days before St. Patrick's Day.
Okay, we, we have a pre-October, is it?
I believe so.
Oh, I don't have it here. Anybody read that?
Yeah.
You have any issue? That was what, what month was that?
October.
It was October. Basically, January. When we take up January, so we'll get her in front of us. See any issues? When we take up, most of it, January 3rd?
Move to accept January 3rd, 2017, minutes.
Second.
Second, thank you. Discussion on it? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And, and October. Sue, you, you read it, and you were okay with it?
Yes.
I don't really have any other input.
I'll make the motion to accept October's minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?